Welcome, everyone, to the September 24 City Council Work Session. This is more work on our City Hall. And the way that I think we are intending to go today is to have City Manager and staff answer the questions you asked at the last meeting. You had made a motion for to get as much as you could of that. And then after we've done that, then we'll move into the questions that you have in front of you. Counselor Clark?
This list of questions, this is what we'll essentially be, you think, voting on today?
Mm-hmm.
So to change the order of the questions, would that require a vote as well?
Probably so.
I move, then, we change the first question to the end.
There's a second?
The...
Being none.
Second.
If I can speak for a second, the reason is because it's not a pertinent subject for us to debate until such a time as we have a decision on whether or not we're going to remodel, in my opinion.
Okay, we're going to vote on this. All those in favor of moving the first to the last indicate all the... All of your hands? One, two? In opposition? One, two, three, four, five? It does not pass? All right. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll ask John and Karen to come on up. You did ask us four specific questions, and we'll provide just a couple minutes in response to those. I'll initially read a response that we received from Turner Construction. That was one of your requests and the follow-up phone call I had with them. And then John will take us through the next couple of questions. And so the first is an email we did receive from Terry Schuger from Turner Construction. This was on September 18th, so it was last Thursday. And it's addressed to John Raul with a copy to Mike Pennwell. And as it says, "As a follow-up to our discussion yesterday, it is important to understand that Turner's November 2011 estimate for the renovation of Eugene City Hall was based upon a specific scope. The scope was defined by very conceptual drawings, existing reports, and preliminary information. The estimate was further defined by our assumptions and qualifications that were part of the detailed estimate. Seeing that this estimate was developed almost three years ago, it would make logical sense that additional information in the form of due diligence studies and reports would become available. This new information could very well have an impact on the three-year-old estimate. I understand that the city has had consultants reestablish the project's estimate, taking this new information into account. This is certainly a very normal practice in the industry, continual reestimating as more project detail becomes available. Turner is not in a position to comment on these new estimates, as we have not been involved in this project for quite some time, as one who would imagine that a lot has transpired over the course of that time." And that was from Terry Schuger, so Project Executive for Turner Construction. I did speak with Terry yesterday, and he reiterated that the three-year-old estimate was based on conceptual drawings with information available at the time, and that it is expected that information and estimates would change. During our phone call, Terry referenced their estimate of the PG&E Park renovation project in Portland. He stated that the accuracy of their estimate was developed following a year of extensive study of the scope and condition of the structure, not as a result of a preliminary estimate using conceptual drawings. In essence, the 2011 estimate is not a good predictor of the cost of a renovated city hall that differs in scope and condition than assumed three years ago. But I'll let you proceed with the other.
Before you do that, John, I just want to pick one comment to follow up on, City Manager. And I just want the public to know that the manager has communicated this to council prior to this meeting.
Okay. Following up on your request from Monday, more detail on the costs not accounted for in the 2011 Turner estimate, and specifically numbers. We identified the categories, but we provided you with estimated additional costs. So the first one would be inadequate structural upgrades based on information. We now know additional shear walls and additional volume of concrete from a closer look at the estimate. The absence in the Turner estimate of accounting for the perimeter columns, which are missing reinforcing, which would explode in an earthquake, so we'd need to add costs for that. And then there would need to be structural upgrades at the fire station. Now, we wouldn't recommend keeping the fire station, but that's in the Turner estimate, and there would be upgrades required there. The total estimated additional cost of structural upgrades is $550,000. Inadequate council chamber improvements. You've, I think we've been through the issues with the council chamber and the required strengthening that make that a more complex project, essentially taking it back to the structure and then rebuilding. And so the number that Turner had in there was $213 a square foot, and that's really assuming they didn't know that that amount of work was required. It would be a better comparison to say, well, it's approximately equal to new work. So that would be $400 a square foot. Over that area is estimated additional cost of $800,000. Incomplete thermal envelope. And part of this is just estimating and what we call takeoffs. That's where you measure things and you count, and you see, is that number accurate, or does it reflect the true scope of work? And in our, going back through the line items, it seems like they're, they have a very different number, so they must be assuming, you know, retaining some of the existing concrete block envelope. And we wouldn't recommend that. Certainly wouldn't meet your energy goals. And then the performance requirements, which were really established post-2011, are higher, and it requires an integrated envelope with insulation. Mark Bruni from PAE described some of those requirements if you were doing a renovation. So estimated additional cost of that would be $699,500. A second aspect to the thermal envelope is the waffle slab, especially above the garage, the exposed waffle slab. From what we can tell, the allowance in there for additional insulation, and Mark described why that's so important, would get, was spray foam. Waffle slab has a lot more exposed area than just a flat slab, about one and a half times the area. So our estimate is you get about one inch of insulation. That's clearly not enough to even come close to the performance requirements we're talking about. So we just throw in, well, maybe instead of $3 a square foot, make it $5. Still would not get you to the performance we're talking about, but that would be an estimated additional cost of $284,000. No, from what we can find, no cost in there to address sagging floors and permanently deflected and out of plumb, out of square structure, which we would recommend starting with that, with partitions and new high-quality envelope. And this is a result of concrete creep. It creeps over time. John McDonald explained that. It's impossible to straighten that. You have to add slabs. And so the estimated additional cost of that would be approximately $211,305. Inadequate, and there are two parts to this inadequate allowance for HVAC mechanical systems. There's no mechanical system in the building. So for the Phase 1 portion of that, Turner had $28.50 per square foot, plus $175,000 for upgrade of the mechanical room. We're, we think that that would cover a fossil-fuel-driven older kind of system. I mean, it was high-performance in its time, but it's really 15-year-old technology, and we're really looking at, the mechanical system is important to the efficiency of the building. So we would put an allowance in there for what's called a variable refrigerant flow. It's a heat pump. We, in the new build, are proposing a ground geothermal system. You can't really do that with the existing building because we can't drill wells in the existing structure. So this is the best we can do, and we think it would be reasonable to estimate additional costs to get to that system of $90,340. Second part of inadequate mechanical system is related to the shell. Really need to hold yourself to the same standards. If you're going to build out shell space, it needs to be integrated construction. Can't just throw the insulation in there later. And we estimate the additional cost, and that's getting you closer to your energy goal, still a tough challenge of $382,800, estimated additional cost. And then finally, a few elements. We talked about the elevator. There's only money in for upgrade of existing, and we think it would be right to provide a new elevator for Phase 1 that would take you from parking into the, into the Phase 1 and not into an unoccupied space. So estimated additional cost of $60,000, and that's, that's pretty light. It would be more expensive than that. And then, in general, we found some areas where there may have been underestimated in square-foot costs in areas. A little bit difficult because it was such a preliminary analysis. For example, the elevated plaza, no money in there to re-waterproof and replace the, relocate the pavers. And then finally, a couple big elements that we talked about on Monday, that there is no design contingency in the estimate. Turner explained that, well, that was held by the owner, the standard. What we're holding our own cost estimating to is that's part of the construction cost. It's not a soft cost. It should be part of the estimate. And at this stage, at a very preliminary stage, we would hold ourselves to 20%, and it certainly would be required for the level of information you had in 2011. And then finally, missing escalation, account for the many, the extra years that it would take to get here. So the number in the estimate was 4.5%. With the benefit of hindsight and looking ahead to 2015, really, the number should be 16.5%. And you can do the math on what that would do to the total.
So that is all background information related to the 2011 conceptual studies that were completed to help inform where we are today. The second question, or the second request, had to do with some conceptual cost, construction cost comparisons for the current 2014 project. So to walk through that first sheet of information quickly, the cost information that's included on this page has been prepared based on a concept design. And this is pre-schematic design information, pre-schematic, pre-schematic cost information. And although it's specific to the unit, because cost estimating is very disciplined, and what we have is specific to the unit, all of these numbers are, of course, approximate. And John just spoke to the reason why some of that is. So walking through under that heading, Phase 1, conceptual construction cost comparison based on estimates, between the renovation option that was studied by the design team and the proposed design, in terms of demolition, the difference in that cost is $825,865 for the renovation option and $1,011,240 for demolition for the proposed design building new. There's not that large of a difference between those numbers because selective demolition, taking the building to its structure, will still be a significant cost in work going forward. And of course, there's costs associated with demolition of the, of the structure and the rest of its associated elements as well. The second line about the Phase 1 building area with the renovation option, that number was $8,334,970, with the proposed design at $6,981,371. In the renovation option, of course, that's looking at working into an existing condition, and some things are made more complex by that. There are also changes to the existing structure that we proposed as a part of studying options, viable options. And the reason for those, some of those structural changes, taking a few locations of the existing slab and actually bringing it down to grade, removing the plaza-level slab, apparently, essentially, was to try to accomplish some of the accessibility goals of the project. The third item has to do with shelled space. Shelled space is presumed to be floor area enclosed by a complete thermal envelope with mechanical and electrical infrastructure provided. Additional tenant improvements would be needed to make this floor area into usable office space, including mechanical, electrical, and plumbing build-out, interior partition walls, and all interior finishes. There's a 40,000, roughly 40,000 square feet of shelled space that would be associated with a renovation option, and that's at a cost of $30,93,480. And there is no shelled space comparative in the, in the proposed design. In terms of seismic upgrades, the cost associated with working in the existing structure, bringing that to safe level, is $1,773,622. Of course, no seismic upgrades needed for new construction that is already seismically to code. In terms of site and parking area, a comparison of $1.4 million essentially for the renovation option and $1.2 million for the proposed design. In both cases, we were looking to create really welcoming civic space associated with Civic Hall. In the renovation option, it included an area of at-grade plaza and the reworking of the existing courtyard to transition from that at-grade plaza to that council chamber space. In the proposed design, it is a Civic Plaza fronting the building that connects to the Great Street of 8th Avenue, and also site improvements to the north side of that building. So in terms of where that gets you for a base cost, it's $15,449,067 for the renovation option that we costed and looked at. For the proposed design, it's $9,241,122. The last two lines are the contingency and markups that would be associated with both of those base cost numbers. In the case of the renovation option, would be a total markup of 39%, including the, the cost markup contingencies include 1% for art, a 15% estimating contingency for renovation versus a 12% estimating contingency for new construction, a construction process contingency of 5%, construction cost escalation of 5%, general conditions at 10%, and contractor profit and overhead at 3%. So for the renovation option, that gets you to $6,025,136, and for the proposed design, So the total core project cost comparisons for the renovation option that we looked at with the current project is $21,474,203 versus the proposed design concept, which is at Any questions about this information?
Counselor Brown?
Yes, thank you. Someone mentioned earlier that there was, you know, no, that Turner's rebuild had no design figures, requirements, money. There isn't in their Build New estimate either. There's no, there's no allocation for design. It says, "Design fees by owner," and there's no dollar amount listed.
Yeah. It's important to clarify that a design contingency, or Karen used the term estimating contingency sometimes, those are used equally. It's really talking about construction unknowns of, of a project, scope unknowns. That's different from design fees. I mean, design contingency is not talking about design fees. A design contingency is part of the construction cost markups. Design fees are part of the soft costs of the project.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back three years ago to when you made your presentation, and Otto Patichia made the presentation for rebuild, and you made the presentation, or your company made the presentation for Build New. Did you dispute the accuracy of Turner's estimates at that time?
Well, I'm going to say, George, one more time, we are not disputing the Turner's estimate from 2011 at all. They estimated based on the scope and the information they had at the time. And so their estimate is a good estimate for 2011, given the scope and the conditions at the time. So they did not dispute it. We do not dispute the estimate for what it was purposed for in 2011.
And nobody, yes, I understand it was a conceptual estimate, but nobody disputed their estimates for Build New either. And, and you're talking about all the cost escalations. They also apply to the Build New option. It's the same rate for inflation of construction materials, wages, and so on. So to imply the rebuild option, that's the, oh, gosh, it's just going to cost so much more because of escalation of costs, that's, that's going to apply to Build New also.
I think that the key clarification there is that we have 2014 cost estimates associated with the current project that show a renovation option at $21.4 million and a new construction option at $12.5 million. So the 2014 numbers are trying to account for the fact that we do know much more now than we knew in 2011, and bring forward information that's useful to the decision-making process of bringing forward a recommendation to council.
Okay, thank you. But I would also like to suggest that these figures are conceptual also. You only, and I congratulate you for throwing this together in two days. However, this wasn't a deep look by going through the building and zemming everything. Just as Turner's wasn't a deep look, as you claim. So this, these have to be regarded as conceptual, too, these figures here. Right? You've had one day. You mean, Turner said that they spent close to a year in examining Civic Stadium when they did that remodel. Am I correct? That was in Terry Shugru's letter.
Right. That's the PG&E stadium?
Yeah, right. That was their old Civic Stadium. Yeah. So, you know, this, this was kind of like a drive-by estimate, too. And if you want to use that term.
I have to clarify again, I'm sorry. This information, the 2014 estimates for these two alternatives, are based on the year and a half of work of the full-integrated design team and our professional cost estimator. This is not information that has been, been swept together quickly or is without consideration by that full team in this process. So I wanted just to clarify.
Look, here's the problem.
Well, this would be comparable to Turner's one-year look at PG&E.
But it's still a conceptual estimate, this is. Turner's wasn't. They went and examined everything, every beam, every, every piece of plumbing, everything. This, this does not represent that, that deep of a look.
We'll just have to disagree with that.
The format is difficult for us to follow. We need a little time to digest these figures. The format that was used for the Citizens Advisory Committee, and this is still something we've never done. We've never seen up on a screen Turner's estimates for rebuild. There were two estimates for rebuild and one for Build New. We've never seen, we've never seen that. It's, what we have is piles of paper, and now we just got this today.
Thank you, George. Betty, you're up.
Thank you. So you are saying that it would cost approximately $9,000, nine...
Million.
Nine, nine, what?
Million.
Nine million. Excuse me. I'm not used to those big figures. Approximately nine million more to renovate than to build new, is that what you're saying?
That's right.
I think if we, and are you counting in the millions of dollars that we would lose by losing the underground parking?
The, what we are looking at here is given the, the requirements of the project of, and comparing, you saw on Monday, the range of schemes that we, we looked at. We looked at many more than just pure renovation and Build New. All sorts of options of how to slice up the building. This is, this is closest to a pure renovation of the building that does hang on to some of the parking because of shear walls and some inefficiency of that. We would, as John McDonald described, you'd lose some of that parking. There is parking, as, as you can see in the City Hall retained in the renovation option. And so there is, there is parking in its current form. There's also parking in the proposed, proposed design. It's important to understand, you know, why is that number so big? You have to take on, to do the renovation option, we're not proposing to leave two-thirds or half of the existing building unimproved. We wouldn't recommend that. And that's, you know, back in 2011, it wasn't recommended either. You have to do more work. You can't just do the core scope of this phased project. You have to go beyond that. And that's a big part of what accounts for additional cost here.
Well, we haven't considered whether everything would need to be renovated or not, or how much would. We haven't had any detailed information about how much would need to be done and what we want to be done. And we haven't considered the real, well, as I already said, the real cost of the loss of parking and the cost to the city of surface parking, which we would end up with, probably for 20 years or forever. I, I think if, that we need some comparative figures from someone else if we're going to accept the cost of renovation as this. Thank you.
I'm going to ask, give you time to go back to let you finish your presentation. You have one more page of information to share with us. We'd like to begin, aim for the questions in about five minutes.
So this is a, a new piece of information that was requested from the team out of the Monday evening session relating to Phase 2. Specifically, there were some questions about that and how that might be approached. So these are concepts for an approach to consolidation, or concepts for consolidation of approximately 125,000 square feet of city, city needs, city space needs. So that would be Phase 1 plus Phase 2, or in some cases, possibly Phase 3. The consolidation concept associated with a path of renovation of the existing building would mean completing the 25,000 square feet associated with Phase 1 and doing additional upgrades to the remainder of the structure to allow for it to not degrade over the time of duration between Phase 1 and that future phase. The next step of that would be completing 40,000 square feet of tenant improvements in the shelled space. And the third step, in order to get to that 125,000 square feet, would be to build new 40,000 to 60,000 additional square feet. These numbers don't, well, there's lots of things, lots of other details, but those are three steps. In terms of the proposed design concept, they would still have your 25,000 square feet Phase 1, and then a 80,000 to 100,000 square feet Build New, new building. For construction cost comparisons, or for that background in terms of cost per square foot, you know, a number that we think is a reasonable beginning, and it would be a target to try to hit, would be $80 per square foot for the tenant improvement build-out associated with that 40,000 square feet, and then $300 a square foot for building new. Either the building new that you need to do with a renovation option to achieve consolidation, or the building new that you would do to achieve consolidation with the proposed design. Third step of that, or third line of that, is the total cost associated with Phase 1 and Phase 2. So with the renovation option, we have a Phase 1 cost estimate at a preliminary stage of $21 million. Add to that $3.2 million for the additional tenant improvements for that 40,000 square feet. So that gets you to approximately, you know, 24, 24, 2 for the existing building, and then 12 to 18 million dollars associated with building new. For the design proposal that is in front of council, $13 million Phase 1 cost, no shell tenant improvements associated, no, no proposed shell space at this time, and $20 to $30 million cost for building new at 80,000 to 100,000 square feet.
Thank you. So now we're going to, I sent council this week a list of potential questions that we would go through, and I think what we'll have to do is, since we're going to vote on these, Glenn, they're sort of asking a yes or no question, but I'm assuming if this is being put before council in the form of a motion, then you have to ask it in a way that you get a yes or no answer. So this says, should it remain on, on the current City Hall site, the motion would be framed as, just like that?
You can, you can actually do it either way. Because what you're doing with the vote is simply confirming or changing prior direction from the council, if you just vote yes or no, I mean, you could take the first question, for example, ask the question, have your conversation, and then, Mayor, you could say, okay, all those who say yes to the first question, raise your hand. All those who say no, that will answer the question. If you prefer, we can, and I can help you do it, rephrase it as, each of these as a motion, but you don't have to, given the purpose for going through this list.
Okay.
Put it that way, that's fine. I still have a question.
Were that to be binding? You don't have to have it in the form of a motion?
There are motions. They, this is the council either confirming or changing direction in the sense of binding. None of this, nor would a motion be legally binding, because it's not in the form of an ordinance. All of this is direction to your City Manager to go take some action, and if he does do what you voted on, then you have options for dealing with that.
So I'm going to put the first one, have you put the first one up?
Do you want me to put it out and then answer questions?
Yes.
Okay, I'll put it out and then answer questions. First question, should the future City Hall remain on the current City Hall site?
Do we still need a second?
You don't need a second.
Okay, all right. And so I've got George and then Mike.
Well, I still had questions. I mean... I mean, the, the answers to some of those, that list, first of all, was not generated by us, and now here we are voting on it, the suggestion of the manager. I think that's improper. I think that direction should come from us. It's being reversed now. We're receiving direction from the manager and being carefully guided to this little maze of questions to answer. I strongly object to that. I had a question for, I had a question for—
Hold the time for me, please. I just want to interject in here and say, I'm the one who put these questions forward after listening to everybody and asked the city manager to put them in a form for us to use to have this conversation.
All right, all right. I apologize then. I had a question for, for this presentation, this half-hour presentation of a project that's gonna involve many millions of dollars. And we, we really need to examine all this stuff more and maybe even get a third opinion before we answer some of these other questions on the list. Then my, my only question is, who, who prepared these figures?
The design team.
But who specifically? There's like five companies involved as the design team?
The responsible part is RBA.
Roebrockah? Okay, not, not engineers. Engineers didn't prepare these figures.
As part of the design team, they have engineers, but RBA is responsible for the numbers.
May we know the name of the engineer that prepared these figures?
We would be happy to either get that for you.
Because we know the names of the people that prepared the Turner figures. They're not, they're not anonymous people. All right, thank you.
All right, and Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Typically, Glenn, when we go, the reason that I was asking about format is because typically when we go through this process, if someone votes with the majority, they have the option at a future point to reconsider the question. In this format, do I have the option, if I were to vote with the majority, to reconsider the question? To move to reconsider the question?
Yes, but even more than that, because you are giving—
I can move anything, anytime, right?
Exactly. Whether you vote yes or no.
All right. So here's the thing, and I want to just be really clear about this. I've studied a lot of this, all of this in detail. I've been involved in thinking about this for years. I was on the City Hall Subcommittee that worked on a great deal of this for a very long time. I want to say very clearly that I'm convinced, after everything I've seen, that it will cost the city less money to build new than it will to rebuild what we have. I believe it will cost the city a great deal less money to operate over time with a new building than it will to refurbish what we have. And so if it's put to me that way, I'm in favor of building new because of the massive difference in expenditure, based on what I've learned, that's my opinion subsequently. The reason I asked about reconsideration is because I'm convinced there are five votes at this table to build new. So to those who don't want to bring that building down yet, for whatever reason, I may vote with the majority on this first question for the sole reason of bringing it up later, but I guess, now, I don't have to do that. I can bring it up later.
You don't have to.
But I would ask those who favor giving us more time for consideration with that building, and those who favor the potential for other options, to consider that. If we have a, a vote to schedule a new work session, we, we have more time to have that discussion. Thank you.
So we're gonna vote on this first one?
I have a question.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
You're right, George.
Thank you.
And then George.
You know, I've been involved in this discussion since coming on the council in 2003. I reviewed the pages of the recap of council's actions on the City Hall plans that go all the way back to 2001. Claire's comments the other night kind of triggered some memories that I had of some of the previous meetings we had discussions. If you read the recap, if you listen to what Claire had to say, and if you go back and review some of the past meetings, the direction to stay on, and I'll repeat basically what Claire said, the direction was numerous times from numerous peoples with different concept designs on how to build City Hall was to stay on the current site. There was talk at one time about going to Rock and Rodeo before the property owner was even contacted.
I remember.
When that was brought up, not only was it the fact that the property owner was, wasn't contacted and she had no desire to sell, but the majority of the people at that time said no, based on the input from the community, we want to stay on the current site. So I see no reason why we need to discuss this one any further.
And then, George, and then Mike, and then we're gonna vote.
Thanks, Mayor. We've already decided this. We already voted to reject the E-Web site, and that was the six to two vote, if I recall correctly. So I'm, and we've already been through this one, so I don't understand why it's on the list again, but—
Clarity.
Question again.
Pardon me?
Clarity.
Clarity, okay. I thought it was pretty clear when we, when we did the six to two vote, but—
Yes and to some no. All right, Mike.
Thank you. I would remind my colleague that we have new people at the table than we had at that vote, and that sometimes produces a different result. And it was my impression that there were at least three, and perhaps more, who would consider the idea that at a different location, it was a wiser project as a whole. And that's the other thing that I didn't say earlier, I wish I had and thought to say more clearly. While I believe that Phase One is a great deal less expensive to build new and to operate new than to remodel, I don't have the foggiest idea how we're gonna afford to build Phase Two in the next 20 years. And I think that's a disservice to the public, because we don't have a clear plan once we get this far down the road. I, that's why I push so hard on the E-Web site, because I believe it gives us, A, all the space we need for, you know, twice the space for half the money, and it gives us a way to get to completion that we can afford. We cannot afford the complete City Hall with the path that we are on, and I'm troubled by that. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna vote on this now, and the question was, should the future City Hall remain on the current City Hall site? All those who vote yes, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those who vote no, one, okay. The answer is on the current site. The next question?
Should the future City Hall be new construction, or should the existing City Hall be renovated?
All right, Council Brown.
It's way too early to vote on this one. Way too early. We passed two motions on Monday night for today's work session, and one was have an analysis of what rebuild and build new options would provide in terms of cost and deliverables, and a more in-depth discussion of Phase Two, how that, all that relates to Phase Two and impacts Phase Two. We have some dollar amounts for each objection to Turner's estimate. That has been fulfilled, but these amounts have not been vetted. These amounts were provided after, in one day. They differ radically from the Turner estimates. I am totally incredulous that Turner's estimate could be off by $8 million. I think that's impossible. That's like twice what their estimate was. I just don't think that, I think Turner is definitely not incompetent. They're, they're one of the best companies in the whole world. So we need to examine these figures. And, you know, we had a 20-minute presentation and 10 minutes for questions, and we're talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars here. That's not enough time to analyze what we have. And if the majority is ready to move ahead on this, that is the most fiscally irresponsible thing I can think of. We simply don't have enough time to analyze this information. We cannot possibly vote on this question today, whether to tear down or build new. I think we need a third-party opinion to somehow reconcile these two estimates that was the one that we just saw today. We just saw these figures today. We've had Turner's estimates kicking around for a couple of years. We, we need, I think I have enough time. I'll just quote something from Terri Shagru's email to believe the city manager, and he says, you know, it makes sense that additional information in the form of due diligence studies and reports would be made available. This, this what we have here is not due diligence. This is not a due diligence. It's, it's, you could barely call it a report. It's a, and it's not formatted in a way that's easy to understand either, like the presentations that Roebrockah and Poticha Architects did for the Citizens Advisory Committee. That was a very clear format, clear columns, you could read. This, I don't even see $8 million over, or underestimate on this, you know, it's not totaled up. The format's bad. We, we need, we definitely need more time to analyze this, and we'd be making a huge, huge mistake, and I think our constituents would be very angry at us for not analyzing the financial information more deeply.
Councilor Zelenka?
Yeah, I fully support the concept to reduce, reuse, recycle. In fact, I drive a 1963 Volvo. I remodeled my 1927 house twice, and I strongly supported remodeling the police station rather than building new, because it was a lot cheaper. I authored the reusable bag ordinance. I've been an early supporter of restoring historic Civic Stadium, but sometimes that's not the right way to go. It's not the best option. I've read almost everything that we've been provided, going back to the two initial build-new and rebuild studies, even before that, and after hearing and analyzing all this information for about a year and a half, it's not like this information just came up. This has been a longstanding discussion. I believe that building a new City Hall is the right direction for Eugene for four reasons. Functionality, accessibility in community, sustainability in energy and cost. On functionality, I think the existing and the rebuilt structure, which would be essentially the same, does not function well for what we need, but a new City Hall will be modern, more useful, and more functional. On accessibility and community, in its day, I think the current City Hall was a, was a fine building, but it's not anymore. It's not welcoming, it's inwardly focused, it's not accessible. The new building would be welcoming, accessible, it would be a real asset to our city, would help create identity and pride within the city, allow more people to participate in the new meeting rooms, and would allow us to display and celebrate our rich history, and New Public Plaza would engage the citizens of Eugene with City Hall. And I also love the potential of a courthouse on the eastern block and, and an expanded farmer's market. From a sustainability and energy standpoint, I think clearly new City Hall is more sustainable, will have a substantially lower energy and carbon footprint over its life. From a cost standpoint, it's clear to me that the new information about the existing structure adds increased cost and cost risk, and will likely add potentially millions of dollars to that three-year-old rebuilt, rebuild option that Turner put. And Turner themselves said we shouldn't not use that estimate today, given the new information. So I believe our staff and Roebrockah Architects have been very thorough, very professional, very competent. That's why we hired them. And, and I do not believe, do not have any reason to mistrust their cost estimates, nor do I feel compelled to seek another estimate. I think they've done a, a very credible job of doing this work, and it's not something they just cooked up last week, it's been worked on for, for a long time. So the net cost of the two options is 21.4 million versus 12.5 million. Renovate would cost about $8.9 million more, that's about 70% more. Clear to me that the new build option is a much lower cost risk, will be substantially cheaper to option to build and to operate over its life. So I'm in favor of building a new City Hall.
Councilor Charette?
Thank you. I really appreciate Councilor Zelenka's comments. They reflect a lot of my own views. I do want to thank the folks who've come out to ask us to reconsider how we're gonna, you know, repurpose that site and, and rebuild City Hall, the Save City Hall folks, you know, a very thoughtful, caring, passionate group, and I appreciate the civic engagement that you've brought forward, but it has not changed my position. And, you know, I am puzzled also about this, going on and on about the Turner estimate. I do not find the issue of the Turner estimate to be pertinent to this discussion. There are many other considerations, and Councilor Zelenka just laid out a, a number of the big ones around this project besides cost. We have a budget, and whichever direction we go in, we've got to stay within that budget. And I'm puzzled why my colleagues are bringing this issue forward today, considering we voted on this direction in January and then reaffirmed it again in February with some significant adjustments when our team came back to us and shared with us the challenges of really trying to maintain the underground parking and bring the building down to street level, and the challenges of trying to bring the City Council Chamber up to earthquake safety standards and energy efficiency standards without the most kind of concerted effort. We'd still only get a marginally more energy-efficient building. It would never be brought up to what standards we'd expect from a, a modern building, and we'd forever be costing the public dollars in trying to keep it cool in the summer and warm in the winter. In addition, the earthquake upgrades would significantly change the physical characteristics of the building, so much so that would probably lose some of the very things that I believe Councilor Taylor is hoping to maintain about the way that space works for public meetings. So I agree with Councilor Zelenka. We have a team that has been repeatedly lauded, even by those folks who want to keep the current City Hall design as extremely professional, highly competent team. I have been very pleased with the designs they brought forward, which were based on a series of decisions this council made with input from the public, and I believe we should continue in the direction that we've started. I do think I would very much support us starting to work on Phase Two as soon as we've made the decision to move forward and decide what we're gonna do on Phase One, that we can start that process immediately. I agree, it will be a challenging process as well, but we need to get this one settled first.
Okay, Councilor Pryor?
Thank you. We are at the core question. This is the one that will really be the key for deciding whether we're gonna go down this road or that road. And I have been incredibly impressed with the passion and the sincerity and the work that's been done on the advocates for both paths. It really has been very impressive. And what I've come away with is the clear understanding that both of these options are possible. They are feasible. In fact, if you even look at the estimates that we had today, at, when it's all said and done 15 or 20 years from now, you're only off a difference of a million bucks between the two options. So it's not that you can't do either one, or that one is necessarily better than the other from just a cost standpoint. It really boils down to a much more fundamental question than that. They can both be done, and they can both be done within a budget that's really relatively similar. The costs change like this over the course of that 15 years, and that's where I think the confusion comes. At this point, it's this much, and at this point, it's this much, but when it's all said and done, it would be very, very similar. So what we're now down to, to me, is less about the dollars, and it's really more about the statements of values that are really trying to be expressed here. We keep coming back to values. And I think what's, what, what we're trying to do is wrap that debate in numbers to make it sound like it's more legitimate, but it's really not. We need to get back to what we're really talking about here, and at its core, it's about our preferences, what it is that we really want to say for the community, and what it is we really want to achieve with this building. And I think both sides are sincere in their belief that this building, in the way they want it, will express and make a statement for what they want it to be. So I'm now at the point where I have to say, what, what do I want that statement to be? What do I want? And I think after having looked at it a lot and thought about it a lot, when it's all said and done, I think the final statement for me is the one that's an expression of the values we talked about all the way back in 2005, which is, to me, more reflected in the new building than it is in the current building. The current building is not without value. I mean, there are values there, but if I had to choose, all things being equal, and the numbers coming out pretty darn close, I think for me, the choice will be the flexibility, the capability, and the potential that comes from the new construction, than spending a lot of money and basically winding up with a building that's pretty much what we have now, just upgraded and fixed up. That, that's, I, I'm sorry, that's not where I want to go.
Councilor Poling?
Thank you. In the interest of saving time, since I doubt very seriously the way this conversation's going, that we'll get all of the answers that we're looking for today, I will just say that I do agree with, with— that I do agree with, with Counselors Zelenka, Sarett, and Pryor on a majority of what they said. I too am extremely plus, impressed with the team that the city has hired. And when you start a project like this, you put a team together, you hire a team, they come up with their estimates, guesses, studies, whatever it is, they present it to you. Why would we say, no, we want to go with somebody else that hasn't done all the work and spent the time that they've done? Uh, you know, I can see us going round and round and round on this issue, and every time we come up, if we were to say, well, let's, you know, renovate, we'll get people coming back and say, no, it's better to do it this way, and we're going to have the same conversation over and over and over. We hired a team, we gave the city manager direction, they're coming back with the information. I think, again, I'm going to say it, we need to move on with this project.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. In the same vein as Counselor Poling, I agree with what has been said before me. I think that the one thing that I'm, I'm concerned about in this conversation is that we don't disparage the team that we hired. They're highly credible professionals who have done an excellent job of providing us the information that we have requested for us to formulate a decision at this table. So, you know, I'm not an architect, I don't play one on TV, nor am I an engineer, or, you know, a construction manager. And I think that we have the experts in place to give us the correct vision and direction to move forward with a solid decision. And so I just want people to know out there that, you know, councils before us, before I came on council, I think made very sound judgments in contracting the people who have provided us with the advice that we need to move forward on this project.
All right then, Counselor Taylor.
Okay, a couple of corrections, things I think aren't quite true. We didn't hire the team, the city manager hired them. And we never, we never voted to build a new building. The only, the last vote we took on this issue is the one that we reaffirmed a couple of weeks ago, which was to retain the council chamber as much of the building as was feasible, and the parking, and the art. And that does not say demolish, and didn't say build a new building. If we do vote for that, it will be the first time. We've never voted for it. It happened. We were, we were told it was happening, and that wasn't a year ago, it was a couple of months ago, I think. I'm not sure how many months, but it's a matter of months, when we were brought in this concept of a new building. And we did not vote on it. And as for values, some of the chief values that I think we have, sub we have, are stewardship, and that is not what we're doing. We're not taking care of the property that we have, we haven't for years. And fiscal responsibility, if you give up a lot of space and get something that's way too small, that is not fiscally responsible. You make it so that it's not easy, and probably won't happen to expand and to have enough space. And we, I think, want to avoid creating new problems, and a new problem will certainly be a huge surface parking lot. And another eyesore, in a sense. We've, we've let this building become an eyesore, but it could be rehabilitated. And I think that, you talk about experts, I think there are a lot of other experts who have totally different opinions. Thank you.
So I just want to clarify a couple things. I remember when council made the decision that we were going to phase in this project, and that we would do it in keeping with the money that we had over time. And that was the, sort of the step out of the gate we took. I can also recall the first year I was mayor, which is 10 years ago, when I came in and said, why do, why is this building looking the way it's looking? And the answer was, the council has made a decision to build a new building. And so, and they also made a decision to do the least maintenance possible. And so that's why it looks the way it does, and that's why we're, we're heading down the road to work at the consultant back then on new city hall concepts. So that was 10 years ago, when I, first time I walked through the doors of the city hall. Ready to vote? So I think the way we're going to-
Go ahead, George.
I still, I have-
Counsel Brown.
Just one more round, thank you. Yeah, we, we've never voted to demolish the building. That's a misconception. We're still at a crossroads. We can either go new build or rebuild, and, um, so it's, we, we never said, let's just tear it down. When we still have, have not examined side by side phase one costs and what that means for phase two. If we rebuild, it's very clear to me that we're much better positioned to afford the full build out of phase two. If we follow that option, we even increase our chances of, of having space for phase three, for like 20 years, 30 years from now, when the departments expand, they're going to need more space, they could be relocated in the basement. Because Turner's estimates included lowering the surface by two feet, and now you've got office quality potential space. So, um, and that would probably mean that you would have to build a parking structure across the street. That's what it's going to mean if we do the total build new, we'll have to build a parking structure. There's only going to be about 35 spaces, six spaces. That's, that's clearly inadequate. So I, I, you know, we've had a lot of talk about values and so on and vision. I don't think we've had enough talk about the money. We haven't had enough talk about the money. It's, I believe it's going to be much more expensive to build new option, and where's that money going to come from? We have no idea. Well, it'll, I'll tell you where it's going to come from. There will be moves every year to siphon money off of, out of the general fund, divert it from services that people pay their taxes for. And every spring, we're going to have long lines of people at the library in our budget committees begging us, please don't close my branch library, please don't close my pool, please don't cut $300,000 from human services, you know, and so on. Please don't close the park restrooms. And that's where the money's going to come from. And if we go the preserve route and rebuild route, we get a lot more bang for the buck. And I just don't believe that with the materials now, that it would be that, that much, you know, more expensive for utilities and so on, energy use. So I'm going to make a motion, I, I, you know, this, this does not represent due diligence. This isn't enough to go on to just completely say, well, Turner's figures are no good, let's just bag them. It's not enough, this doesn't even qualify. So I'm going to make a motion to table the vote on this particular item to another work session until we can have a more detailed examination of, of what it's actually going to cost, phase one and phase two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, there's no debate. All those in favor of tabling, please indicate. One, two, in opposition. One, two, three, four, five, six, goes down. All right, so now I think we're ready to move on to the discussion, the question at hand, which is, I think the way it's stated is, should the future city hall be new construction, or should the existing city hall be renovated? So I think the only way you could possibly answer this one is for me to go around and for you to say, new or renovated.
Say, how many are in favor of new?
Yeah. How many are in favor of new?
Okay.
Yeah, I was-
All right, then I'm, I'm, I'll be asking a different question. All right. How many in favor of new? One, two, three, four, five, in favor of renov-
Six.
Six, in favor of renovation, two. Okay, so the, the new prevail. Now, just to be, honor my colleague's concern about the word, all the, I, I think that we have to vote on demolishing the old city hall. All those in favor of demolishing the old city hall and the construction, to prepare the way for the construction of the new city hall? Please indicate.
Thank you.
Yep.
I kind of got confused there. What are we doing now?
I just kept, heard three people say, and in other meetings, say, we've never voted on demolishing.
Got it.
So I'm, I'm just asking for you to take an affirmative vote on demolishing in preparation for-
Building new?
Building new.
Point, point of information, Mayor, is that really necessary? I mean-
You guys?
Because I think that whatever is done is implicit in moving forward with new construction.
I thought that before, though.
That was, that was, that's my, that's my thinking, but, you know, I mean-
You could still have number five. This vote wouldn't exceed number five.
Yeah, got you.
I, I, would I, so, I don't want to do this in a way that says more than you want to say, but I don't want it to leave anything open either, because I think you want to have a discussion about the use of the chambers. So Glenn?
Yes.
I'm looking for a way to, to get that clear, that still leaves the door open for a conversation that Counselor Evans would like to have about the chambers.
My suggestion then is postpone the demolition question that you want to ask until we get down to question five, which is the one about-
Okay.
Preserving the existing council chambers.
Okay, I'll slip demolish down there. All right. Okay, we're going to move on, yes.
One of the interesting things from, for me about this discussion, and one of the reasons I wanted to move the first question farther down, like we're doing with this one, about demolishing, is that we're doing, in my opinion, a good job today of answering tough questions with direct answers, and that's good. The only thing, in my opinion, we're not addressing well enough, and I appreciate what Claire said, both Monday night and today, about the fact that we should engage as quickly as possible in a conversation about how to complete the whole project. But we're not addressing that as, as directly as we are some of the other things. It's why I was hoping that we could push that first question a little bit farther. And I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse here too badly, but I believe there are, there may be, I suggest there may be a majority of us that have grave questions about how we complete the whole pro, project of rebuilding a new city hall, but who have, who are, you know, authentic about the way they've answered questions so far. So I, I want to find a way for us to say, other than stay on the side or don't, that we believe it's wiser to go about the process of waiting until some future point to figure out phase two, as opposed to looking at what we might buy off a different site that would give us the whole of our space needs. And I don't know how to formulate that motion, and I don't know, I don't want to be a problem with the process. But I think we need to answer that question as directly as we are the other ones. So I'll give it to you as a, as a request, if you can think of something that would help that too.
Maybe you can work with Glenn on, on something. Yes, Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, yes, Counselor Clark, you're exactly right. We have no idea how phase two is going to be completed. Only the merest vaguest ideas have been thrown out. The land swap, the, you know, well, let's have shops and office buildings, and let's do all this stuff. It is so vague, I mean, I would say it's not even conceptual. So yeah, that, that's a huge problem, and that's why we, we need at least one, I thought we needed at least one more work session to discuss all that, because it's just really irresponsible to not do that. Our, our constituents expect us to be financially responsible, and I, I think that we've demonstrated pretty clearly today that we're not. Thank you.
Counsel Pryor.
Yeah, just quickly, I would, I would agree in part with Mike, and also channel something that Claire said. I would hope that we would schedule work sessions regarding phase two as quickly as possible, so that we can begin to build the clarity and understanding around what that's going to be. I think we have, we all have some ideas about it, but I don't think that any of those ideas have been, begun to solidify yet. And I do, I do think we want to do that, not only for our benefit, but also to convey to the community that it is something we're thinking about, and it is something we have in mind. I do recall, George and, and Betty probably remember this better than I do, is specifically years ago, the facility reserve fund was set up because of the expectation that we would finance the building of a new city hall pretty much ourselves. That was kind of our pact we made with the community 15 years ago, or whenever it was. And we built up that facility reserve, not necessarily with ongoing money, but mostly with money we could collect either in one-time charges or money that was intentionally to be used for that purpose. So we weren't stealing from libraries to pay into the facility reserve, and I would not support stealing from libraries to pay into the facility reserve. And I would want in our phase two discussion to say, if we're going to rebuild the facility reserve, what is the mechanism to do that, that holds harmless our ongoing expenses? I think that's a fundamental part of that conversation. But I do think rebuilding the facility reserve as a part of our phase two, three, four strategy is critical for us to be able to demonstrate that we do have some fiscal responsibility here, and we do have a plan in mind. So I would want to get that scheduled just as, as soon as we reasonably could.
Yes, we can put something on the schedule to continue a conversation about phase two. We'll put that on a, a work session and find a right spot for that.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I'm willing to talk about the consolidated city hall or phase two, but I don't see this as a foregone conclusion that we're going to go that way, or, or need to account for that in this decision-making at all. I, for one, don't expect to see that actually happen, a phase two, in the next decade, maybe two, if ever. I expect phase two to be quite costly and potentially unnecessary. When I first got on council back in 2008, the city was working on a consolidated city hall proposal, and they came back, it cost us about $120 million for consolidated city hall. I made the motion to, to go out and ask the citizens of Eugene whether or not they had that level of support for that, and their willingness to pay for that, and, and the results were not very favorable. And, and, and I think I made the motion to stop the consolidated plan and refocus our, on, on efforts that get us a new city hall, and that we can build within our current means, meaning no borrowing, and that, essentially, the direction we've been going on. So we, you know, we, we proceeded to move out the police, the court, human resources, others, and then when E-Web shut down the district heating system, we lost our heat, so we shuttered the existing current city hall, and now here we sit in this building. So I'm not holding my breath for a consolidated city hall anytime in the near future, so when I look at this decision, I see it as a standalone, new si, small city hall project as opposed to phase one of phase, of two phases. So phase two discussion doesn't hold much relevance for me, willing to talk about it. I'm not convinced a consolidated city hall is even necessary or desirable, given the cost. People no longer access or interact with city hall the way they used to. Today, people rarely physically go to city hall, except for a few exceptions, like getting permits, or going to court, and, and a couple of other things. Today, most of it is done online, and, and that trend is accelerating. So I think the city hall of the future is going to be, should look, and will look completely different than a city hall of the past. So I don't think we should be constrained about that consolidated city hall. I think the one-stop shopping consolidated city hall concept is, is becoming less and less relevant and less and less necessary. So I look at this as a standalone, small city hall program for what we're doing right now, and I'm not so sure we even need to go to consolidated city hall. Most cities' halls in, in, that I go visit around the West, while not consolidating, they're scattered. And that's because it's very expensive to consolidate it. And so even if we built a small building, we'd have, it would have to be, it wouldn't consolidate all of our services. And I don't think we want to consolidate all of our services at city hall. So I think that that kind of conversation is something we need to have about what do we, why do we want to even have a phase two? And then talk about the cost of it.
Glenn?
I thought more about how you could frame the question you would ask about demolition. If you want to do that now, the way to frame that question would be, with the possible exception of demolishing the council chamber, should the current city hall be demolished?
Okay, thank you for that. Hey, we'll do, we'll move that back up then. I want to try to get that done at least before we're out of time. I've got Counselor Clark and Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. In a shocking turn of events, I disagree with my colleague across the table. And has an interesting view of the history of this, too. The thing that we're not accounting for in that, you know, I, there's, there's relevance in what Alan says about how people will interact with city, the city in the future. However, for as far out as I can see in the future from our planning, we're going to need space to present those services to the public. So we're going to rent that space from somebody else, and it's going to cost us a great deal more over time. And for me, the reason to consolidate- consolidate is because it costs the citizens a great deal less money for us to serve them in a consolidated way than it does spread out all over. And the reason I'm going to vote against demolishing is because it takes an option off the table. One of the reasons I pushed so hard at the idea of E-Web is because it consolidates services in one place. It gets us twice the space for half the money. And I believe it, and I know I'm, I'm in the vast majority here, but I believe it a better space for city hall. However, as soon as we tear down that building and begin to demolish, we've taken all other options off the table, other than build new and hope we figure out a way to build phase two. We've committed ourselves to no plan as the desirable option, and I have difficulty with that.
I've got Counselor Brown and Counselor Taylor, and then I'll have Glenn help me get that motion on the table. And my only other comment would be that I just, and this is for the public, is that we have part of our staff in the library, which is a building we own. We have another part of our staff in the atrium, which is a building we own. We have part of our staff in, in the police station, which is a building we own. We have part of our staff in the fire administration building, and that's a building we own. So to that degree, all of those folks that work for the city have their, have those buildings, and I don't foresee them coming back into other buildings. They have other needs that are different from the, from the, the building we're talking about. So, and then we have a few folks in the Public Works Building, and, and then we have us over here. And we have the, we had an agreement with, with a downtown invigoration to put some of our staff over in the Woolworth Building. And, and then I think in terms of the court, many of you will recall, if you ever came to city hall, going through the court gauntlet, which was where everybody had to do their business at the municipal court because there's no room inside to do their, to do their business. And so there was no respect for the people who had to go before the court, and no way for people to have private meetings to talk to the people, the clients that they were representing. And so I think more than, more than the need to get out of that building was the need to get into a space where they could actually honor and respect the people they were trying to provide services to. And if we get to a situation where we have a justice center of some sign, then, then we can have that conversation again. So, anyway, Counselor Brown and then Counselor Taylor.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, as I recall in past council discussions about, you know, city hall site, we, first of all, we rejected the E-Web and chose the current site. And as part of that, we didn't, that we did vote on. We didn't vote on this second piece, but as I recall, the council clearly expressed a preference for consolidation on the one site. We didn't take a vote. There was no discussion about money, how much it would cost at that time, but that was our preference. And I believe that most of the citizens that live here would, would much rather see the city services, except for police and fire, consolidated in one building. It'd be so much easier to do city business because oftentimes you have to deal with more than one department. As the atrium, as far as the atrium goes, that can be sold. We could sell the atrium. The fourth floor of the library, my understanding was that central services and IT are using it now, but with the expectation that they would move out as the library kept expanding, which it is doing, and at some point in the, hopefully not too far off, future, they'll have enough books and other materials and more computers, and they will use the fourth floor. So they could move to the consolidated building, too. So, and I recall the Thomas hacker. I went to several of those meetings a few years ago about the $132 million city hall. Thought we paid close to $2 million for that study, and we didn't get anything out of it. So, thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
Okay. We, we, I think we're being very casual in disposing of the property that belongs to the public. It doesn't belong to the nine of us. But also, when you talk about services, the services are for the public, not for the council, not for the staff. They're, they're for the public. And just today, I was talking to someone who is not a poor person who can't afford a computer. There are a lot of those left. We have to consider them, too. But this person was upset about having to go to different locations for something. If you go to the wrong location, then you are sent some other place. That's the main reason we needed to keep city hall close to the county building is because sometimes people don't know which they need to see. But if someone wants to speak to a planning department, something, or neighborhood services, it should be the same place as it should be in a city hall, where people know where, and where they aren't told, go six blocks that way. Instead, you go down the hall or upstairs or around the corner or something. I think it's really that we need to think about the long-term effects of what we're doing, which is way after any of us are on the city council, and about the danger of doing, making a wrong decision, destroying public property, and creating an eyesore, which it will be. I, we, I agree with Alan that we probably won't have a phase two if we do this, not for a long time, but we could have, we could keep what we have. Thank you.
Glenn, can you read that one more time?
Question would be, with the possible exception of demolishing the council chamber, should the current city hall be demolished?
Okay. So, all those who say yes, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, no's. One, two, three, it passes. Thank you. Let's see. The next question up is, should the new city hall be constructed on only one half of the current city hall site?
Since we're now talking in terms of phases and things like that, are really what we're saying is, should the new city hall phase one, whether there's a phase two or not, the building we're talking about right now, the phase one, be constructed on one half the current city hall site? I think that gets us to the question at hand, the immediate issue. So I would just add that phrasing, if that's okay.
You got it down there?
Yeah. Should the new city hall phase one be constructed on only one half of the current city hall site?
Okay. That's it. Yes, Mike?
That implies the, that carries with it the implication that we may want to sell off half of the site, or we may want to do this trade. And I, I'm uncomfortable with that if that's what your intent with this assumption and the way this is, or the way this is worded is. So I would have to vote no because I don't necessarily want to do that. I was looking for clarity here.
I don't think it says that. I think actually what Chris actually leaves that open to question. So all the, I think what Chris has said is, phase one is on, on a half a block. Whatever you choose to do with the rest of the block is still up for question. It can be.
It would be in public use.
Any particular space that you choose at that point?
I, if, if what's intended is to proceed with, with the design team's current plan or new, I'd be in favor of that question.
That's basically what it is.
Is that the intent of the question?
Yeah.
All right. I can be in favor of that.
Okay, Counselor Zalenta, and then Counselor Taylor?
But it does beg the question about, about the other half. And we've got the possibility of a land swap, and that's up in the air and has potential. And I think it would be a really neat thing to have happen, to build a courthouse there, a new modern courthouse, and expand the farmer's market. But that's just potential at this point. There's a lot of hoops to move forward. Right. But, so what is the plan currently for, A, the amount of parking in phase one, and B, some people have made the assumption that, that this other half, the eastern half of the block, would automatically just become a parking lot, which I don't necessarily think is true. It could be open space.
I would, what I would say again is, that's open for a conversation with the council on how you choose to use the rest of the block. And I think it could be, we've talked about courthouses, talked about parking. It can be open space. It could be a farmer's market on that half of the block. That's been talked about. It could be any number of things. It's, that's still a conversation for the council to have. We don't need to know those answers in order to proceed with phase one. If we say phase one's on half a block, we can proceed. That conversation keeps playing itself out.
So what specifically is included in phase one? Is it just a parking lot to the north that has how many spaces?
What we're going to suggest is actually we come back, and there are some options for underground parking as well. So we would like to actually come back and talk about that. That's what's noted as question seven, and we can get into all those kinds of specific design details at that time.
And the next question, question four, actually says, here's what phase one would consist of, which is what RBA's design concept that they presented to you is embodied in.
But everything I saw from RBA had a parking lot next to it.
Okay. So question, question four says, here's what's included. As the city manager just said, there are question seven, that, and eight, and nine that deal with some of those.
So for purposes of this stuff, we're breaking off the parking to deal with in question seven. So right now, we're talking about phase one, the building.
There's a plaza piece to phase one. And there is, regardless of underground parking, there is some parking we've talked about to the north of that building, on the phase one building.
We should have a work session on that.
So I think there's a, the whole topic of underground parking is a.
Okay. I'm willing to let go of the parking, and we'll deal with that in question seven. So right now, this question really is about the building and being on a half of the block.
The phase one building.
Phase one building.
Counselor Taylor?
At this point, I don't know whether it matters or not, whether it's a half block, whether it's a building surrounded by parking or, or building with parking on the side. So I don't, I don't really see an advantage to having it, or probably it should be in the center so it would look like a real center. But I don't know.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, this really does imply, it's not stated, but it definitely implies the use of the other half of the block, whether it's going to be for commercial or for, you know, who knows? And, you know, if it's not going to become a parking lot, what does that mean? Does that mean it's going to be a pit for a few years until we fill it in or develop its parking? I mean, we don't really know that. As far as the land swap idea, I've been doing some research, and this is some preliminary stuff that I was able to come up with. I left you guys copies of all this. One is from seven years ago, when the city was discussing trying to buy the butterfly lot for a new city hall. And the court's response was absolutely not. That's a clear violation of the deed restrictions. And so I thought that would be very informative to read that. And also one from Bill Sider, who works for Pivot Architecture. He gave me permission to share this. I asked him. Pivot has been retained by the county for many years to study their courthouse needs and other design needs. So they have a longstanding relationship. This is a letter to Alicia Hayes from last May. These are his personal thoughts. He was not commissioned to do this, but they were, since it was the subject of conversation, he gave his personal ideas as a consult, not as a consultant, but as a private citizen. So that's interesting. I have not heard or seen any excitement on the part of any of the county commissioners, nor the county administrator about the land swap. And the state government is responsible for building new courthouses now. The county has no money to build a new courthouse. The county has retained a company who will be doing a study of the courthouse needs. The study will take months. A discussion afterwards will take many months. There'll be public hearings. There'll be all kinds of stuff. And my conservative guess is the county is at least two years away from making a final courthouse decision. So I'm, the reason I brought this up is I think we need to remove the idea of the land swap from our thinking, because we need to make our decision now. I don't think we can wait two years. And that's a conservative. It could be three or four years. My understanding is Lane County is third in line after Josephine County and Multnomah County for a new courthouse. So, that's my suggestion. I just think we ought to give up on the idea of the land swap.
I just wanted to interject in the conversation here that I went to a state meeting probably two years ago now, where they were discussing courthouses and talking about an idea of doing a number of courthouses simultaneously because they could take advantage of cost of, cost savings and material savings if they did that. And I, I don't know where that discussion is right now, but I know that was the discussion of why you might tee up two or three of them at the same time, using those state dollars to help implement. And I also wanted to, we'll have this discussion, but I, I didn't want to leave a different picture in people's mind than needs to be. For years now, Anita Johnson's come to me over and over again about need for more green space downtown. And so I would say, in, in this interim phase, there's a lot of opportunity to create more green space and pleasant places for the community to be in our downtown. And we should be looking at it as an opportunity and not as a pit. So just a thought on that. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. The current question, number four, if that's what we're going to vote on next here before we walk out the door, or is it going to be the demolition question?
We're on three.
We're on three.
Sorry.
We will do that, and then we're going to do the demo, we've done the demolition question.
We have, Mayor, the one I would suggest, if it's possible to even get through the council chamber conversation, that would be great on number five.
Number five, we should do five.
But we can.
Well, we're going to have to extend.
Four should be pretty easy.
Extend for a few minutes if we get, if we stop talking on this one.
We've got a 1:30 appointment.
Counselor Clark?
Go ahead and pass. I wanted to make a different comment, but we're not there yet.
All right. So let's vote on this one, which is, yes.
I move that we extend the meeting 10 minutes.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition?
We've got a 1:30 appointment.
Okay. All right. So now we're going to vote on.
Number three.
Number three. You want to read it one more time?
Should, should the new city hall phase one be constructed on only one half of the current city hall site?
All those who vote yes, please indicate.
As planned.
One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition. Two, it passes. Okay. Now we're going to go down to the number five. Should the existing city chamber be relocated on the city hall block and mothballed either for part of, of phase two or for some other purpose? Conversation. Counselor Evans?
Well, since this is my, my, my baby on this one, I think that we do need to preserve some semblance of our history. I, I went through this process in my family when we lost our grandparents' home and had one member who was in control of that sell that out of the family hands. And so I'm, you know, I'm one of those people who believes that we need to have a continuum between our, with, with our past, our present, and our future. And by keep, by moving that, that iconic building over to be part of phase one and part of a city hall complex, I think is, is extremely responsible of us in terms of our stewardship of the city and our stewardship of the city's history, and leaving a legacy for our children and our grandchildren to come.
City manager, I'd like to ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've got Zalenta Clark and Saret. My question is this. How time-sensitive is the answer to this question? Because if we don't need to answer it today, and we have time to have it at another meeting, I think we should be thoughtful about it and take the time to get the, the information that you requested the other day in terms of the cost and all of those kinds of things. So you have that here?
We have.
It's in the packet.
She's not time-sensitive for today specifically, but obviously, as we continue with the design and moving forward demolition, it will be important to answer that question. But today, it doesn't have to be.
It's up to you all, whether you want to come to land on this today. If not, I said, we could make a, a motion to take it up at a meeting soon.
However you want to pursue it.
May I?
I mean, he starts.
What do you want to?
I, I think I have enough information of who forward on it today.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
Because I wasn't aware that George has to leave in a moment, I don't think we should be doing any voting on this subject without. should be doing any voting on this subject without all of us at the table, at which point I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah.
We'll get, we'll get to it. I think it's bad.
We can bring it back.
Absolutely.
The key question.